It's time, the Hanson County Board of Education is back in open session. And at this time, I want to thank all attendees for joining us tonight, along with those watching via the internet or YouTube. We appreciate your interest in our school system, and copies of the agenda are in the foyer for your convenience. At this time, we have recognitions on our agenda, and so I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. McLean and Ms. Hyatt.
Where's Pete?
Testing.
Hello, everyone. How's everybody? We're going to recognize middle school wrestling first. So when I call your name or mispronounce your name, please come forward. Please accept my apologies because these tongue-twisters names. So when they come up, I mispronounce your name, first we get your name correct, and then we'll recognize you and who came with you today, okay? Placing first in 83-pound weight class at the Middle School Rocket River Conference Wrestling Tournament, Nigel Terry, please come forward. Smile. Huh? You don't smile. You smiling?
Not no more.
Not no more? They tough. Who's with you today? Where are they? Raise your hand. Proud of them? We also proud of them. Placing first in the 83-pound weight class at the Middle School Rocket River Conference Wrestling Tournament. Congratulations. Stay up here. Stay up here for me. Deontay Nelson, did I pronounce that correctly? Come on up, sir. Tough as well? There you go. Placing first in the 113-pound weight class at the Middle School Rocket River Conference Wrestling Tournament. Congratulations. Who's with you today? Where are they? Can't see you. Raise your hand. Are y'all proud of him? We are as well. Thank you. Sivan McNair? Kevion McNair, will you please come forward? Come on. I apologize for mispronouncing that. Say it one more time for me. Kevion, I like that name. Placing first in the 138-pound weight class at the Middle School Rocket River Wrestling Tournament. Congratulations. Who's with you today? Where is she? Are you proud? I can tell by those smiles. Congratulations. How about giving a round of applause? Aiden, will you please come forward? Pronounce that last name for me. Say again?
Sek.
Aiden Sek. Placing first in the 185-pound weight class at the Middle School Rocket River Conference Wrestling Tournament. Congratulations. Who's with you today? Some of your cousins. How many cousins? Two? Make them stand up. Make mom stand up. Stand up. Stand up, mom. Where are those cousins? Right there. Stand up. Support your cousins. Be proud of them. All right. Congratulations. You ready? I gave you two? Walker Stinson, where are you? Big Walker. I hear you. Who's representing you today?
My grandparents.
Where are they? I hear you. How y'all doing today? Somebody's missing today. He went to the baseball game, I bet. Grandparents do a lot of things, do they not? You're represented today. You have two sets of grandparents. That's awesome. That is awesome. How about giving Mr. Walker Stinson a round of applause? We're proud of him. Ready for picture? Y'all want me to enter picture out of your picture? I get it? How about giving another round of applause? And what's this? We're going to recognize track team for being, uh, the track team members now being named Rocket River 2A Conference and State Qualifier in shot put, Patience Maxwell. Are you here? She's not here. Will you come up and represent her, coach? Patience Maxwell. How about giving her a round of applause? She's not here. Trinity Sellers, will you come forward? Hi, Trinity. How are you? Who's with you today?
My brother and Coach Wall. No.
You proud of her? Alrighty. Trinity, you've been recognized for Rocket River 2A Conference Champion, being named All-Conference and State Qualifier in the triple jump. Congratulations. Jemaya Maxwell, where are you? Jemaya Maxwell, she's been recognized for being the 2A Conference Champion and All-Conference in the 55-meter dash and long jump. Congratulations to Jemaya Maxwell. Janelle Maxwell, she's not here, but she's been recognized twice today. Janelle Maxwell, she's been recognized as the Rocket River 2A Conference and State Qualifier in the triple jump. Also, Janelle Maxwell. Janelle Maxwell's been recognized for the 2A Conference Field Event Athlete of the Year. Wow. Congratulations. How about giving her a round of applause? Elijah Sellers, will you come up, please? Oh, your brother run tracks. Who's faster, you or your brother? Faster. Huh? She's not.
Yes, I am.
She's long.
Long night.
Okay. Elijah, you've been recognized tonight for a 2A All-Conference State Qualifier in the long jump. Congratulations. Dylan Johnson, are you here? Dylan, not here? Dylan, Dylan. Dylan Johnson is being named the Rocket River 2A Conference and State Qualifier in the shot put. Uh, let's give Dylan a round of applause. She's not here. Jontavious Booker. Who's with you today? Representing, sometimes you have to do that. Sometimes you have to do that. Coach Walls vouched for you. You've been recognized today, Jontavious Booker, for being a 2A Conference Champion, State Qualifier, and being named All-Conference in the 55-meter hurdles. That's awesome. Congratulations, buddy. Congratulations, guys. Ariana Lindsay, did I pronounce that right? Ariana, are you here? Girls wrestling, will you come up and represent her? Is the girls wrestling coach here? Ms. Garcia, will you come up? Did I pronounce her name correctly? Yep, Ariana Lindsay. Ariana Lindsay. Ariana's been, uh, recognized this evening for Rocket River 2A All-Conference and finishing first place in conference tournament in wrestling. Uh, she's not here, but still show us some love, Ariana Lindsay. How about giving her a round of applause? Leah Clark, are you here? Come back up, Mr. Garcia. Is it Leah? Is that right? Leah Clark has been named Rocket River 2A Conference and finished in first place in conference tournament in wrestling. How about showing some love for Leah Clark? Shavatra Turner. She here? Ms. Turner is finishing fourth place in the regionals and being the first Hanson County School District female to qualify for the state playoffs in wrestling. Wow. Congratulations, Ms. Turner. Jackson Stinson. Is he here? Grandparents, will you come up, please? Jackson Stinson, grandparents. We're going to do something different. We're going to embarrass the grandparents. We're recognizing your grandson for finishing third place in the Rocket River 2A Conference, finishing fourth place in the regionals, and for being a state qualifier in wrestling, and for being a great-grandson. Thank y'all for being good sports. Emmanuel Chambers, will you come forward? Emmanuel here? Emmanuel's been recognized for finishing second place in the Rocket River 2A Conference, finishing fourth place in the regionals, and for being a state qualifier in wrestling. Uh, Emmanuel Chambers has been recognized. How about a round of applause? And will the boys, uh, Hanson High Boys Wrestling Team members, if you're here, please come forward. All the wrestling team. Hanson High School Boys Wrestling Team. If you, the Boys High School Wrestling Team, if you come forward. Mr. Stinson? Is he in middle school? Uh, the Hanson High School Boys Wrestling Team, they've been recognized for qualifying for the state dual-team wrestling competition. Congratulations. Girls basketball. Tatiana. Now, we're going to recognize, we're finishing up, right? The, um, girls' basketball team, Tatiana Burns, will you come forward, please? She's not here? Tatiana Burns, receiving Rocket River 2A All-Conference Honors in Basketball. She's not here, but still can we recognize Tatiana Burns? Zakaya Hickson, are you here? Zakaya Hickson, you've been recognized for the Rocket River 2A Conference Honorable Mention, Honors in Basketball. Zakaya Hickson. Zaria Massey, are you here? Zaria Massey, receiving recognition for Rocket River 2A All-Conference Honorable Mention, Honors in Basketball. How about giving her some round of applause? Boys basketball. Ryan Robinson. Ryan is not here. Uh, coach, recognize, place of Ryan. Ryan's been recognized for being the name of the Rocket River 2A First Team All-Conference, uh, Player in Basketball. Congratulations to Ryan Robinson. He's a beast. Congratulations. Emmanuel Stewart, are you here? I'm sorry, Stewart. Uh, Emmanuel Stewart, Emmanuel Stewart has been recognized for the 2A All-Conference Honorable Mention in Basketball. How about giving a round of applause for Emmanuel Stewart? Jamal Griffin. How you doing, sir? Who's here with you today?
My mom, my pops, and my siblings. Smile, bro.
Smile, pops? Proud. Jamal, you've been recognized today for being named the Rocket River 2A All-Conference Honorable Mention in Basketball. Congratulations, sir. Jaden Ludo, are you here? Hmm? Little brother? Come on, little brother. Your brother has been recognized for a 2A First Team All-Conference, Second Team All-District in Basketball with 1,486 career points. Congratulations to your brother. Also, also, Jaden has been named Rocket River 2A Conference Basketball Player of the Year. That's awesome. Player of the Year. Congratulations. That's awesome. How about giving the athletes, student athletes, a round of applause? Thank you very much.
Our board is very proud of those recognized tonight, and we exhort you to continue to excel in your academic and athletic pursuits. And we also invite our attendees tonight to stay with us throughout the entire business section. But if you need to go, now would be a good time to go. Thank you for coming. At this time, we're at item nine, public comment. Hanson County Board of Education welcomes comments from our parents, students, and community. The public comment period is open for members of the public to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about matters of public concern. The performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the educational program, or school facilities, or other matters. Each person is granted three minutes for his or her presentation. This part of the meeting is for the board to hear matters of interest or concern from the public. However, obscene or vulgar statements, personal attacks, and statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or imminently threatening to the orderly operation of the me, of the meeting shall not be permitted. As per board practice, the board will not address nor respond to public comment except for clarification until the superintendent has had an opportunity to investigate the presented issues and/or the board reviews legal, the issue with legal counsel if warranted. We had no one to sign up for public comment tonight. So at this time, we're at item number 10, chairs report. I do want to share with our folks tonight and with our visitors that the contracts for the new middle school are just now finishing the last of their legal reviews, and we're awaiting an opportunity to execute those contracts. Secondly, the superintendent search has begun, and the board will be doing some interviews in April. Do any of my colleagues have anything they wish to share?
During the, um, Read Across America, uh, week, I had an opportunity to wear my Dr. Seuss's hat three times at Waysboro Primary School, Marvin Elementary, and Lousville School. And I also had an opportunity to visit the middle school. And thank you, uh, Mr. Jackson and Ms. Thomas for a tour. And I got to meet all of the international teachers while I was there.
Well, I attended, uh, Read Across America at Waysboro Primary, and there was a lot of community people there. So we do have community support. Thank you.
I also had an opportunity, uh, be at Waysboro Primary and was, uh, commend the staff of excellent job, well done. And I, it didn't really excite it when I started reading a story about Bay Bay Kids. Then you got really excited, so it was really good.
I attended Read Across America. Was that in March, Mr. Vedder, or was it in February? March the 1st, so I'm not a month late. But I really enjoyed it. I, I had a big time out there that day. And I'd encourage anybody who has a chance to go read, go read, because reading is the most important thing you can teach a child.
Hearing the others will move to item 11, superintendent's report.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Truman. Uh, Dr. Ratliff, will you come forward and speak briefly on the alternative school proposal? Uh, just give the board the little information. Uh, send their packet and talk a little bit about the alternative school proposal. Uh, do you need a microphone?
Testing. So good evening again. Uh, Ms. McLean assigned me the task of researching the feasibility of an alternative school versus an alternative program. I visited Montgomery County Alternative School Program and Richmond County Schools. And both schools serve grades six through 12 at the same site. And the sixth to eighth graders are separated from the ninth to 12th graders. But they're located at the same site. They have separate lunches, and they do not intermingle during the day. They go to lunch at different times, and they take PE and recess at different times. So there's a concentrated effort to make sure they're not, um, mingling together. I was really surprised at the atmosphere of both schools. I don't know what I expected to see, but I noticed that most of the students looked like they were very engaged. And I didn't see any behaviors like I was sort of expecting to see. I noticed that they had a lot of positive affirmations posted all around the schools, uh, encouraging the students to do their best and to be their best. I even noticed that they had a timeout room in Richmond County. And they had a punching bag, and I asked about that. I said, "What is this about?" And they said, "Sometimes when a child gets, um, um, upset, a lot of times in a traditional setting, what you would do is you would send that child home, you would suspend them. Because this is the last stop. You can't come to the alternative school and act up." But she said, "Our goal is to graduate these students." So what we do is, they go to a timeout room, and they decompress. And if they're able to decompress, then they go back to class. And we continue on with the program. So I was very impressed with that. And I asked them, why did their districts, I asked both principals, "Why did you all decide to go six-12?" Because, you know, a lot of times, alternative schools are nine-12. And she said that they were seeing a rise in game behaviors. And she said it was mostly a safety issue, a safety concern. And they felt like if you could address the issue early, then you have a good chance of correcting the issue. But if you waited until the ninth grade, then they're already indoctrinated. And she said, "You really have to attack this early." And I said, "Okay, that makes sense." Because we've seen students get in fights this year, and they get suspended. And then they come back to school. And then they come back to school, still want to fight. So it's not out of them. They still want to fight. They still want to prove that point. And so that's a safety issue for every child at that school. Another thing she said was that they had a problem with their graduation cohort rate. Montgomery County School said that by putting six-12 together, it really improved their graduation rate. So I looked into our graduation rate. Anson High School, current graduation rate is 77.2%. It went down 11 points from the previous school year. The state average is around 89%. So right now, we have an alternative program, not an alternative school. And what happens is, we send students to the access program, and then they come back to Anson High School. Well, any dropout impacts Anson High School's dropout rate. And so that's another reason why it's really important to look at how we're assigning students. Students that attend an alternative school can graduate with 22 credits, while at a traditional school, it's 28. So you can see how it really impacts the graduation rate. So in our proposal that we're sending to the state, we addressed two critical pathways on pages seven and eight. One is a discipline pathway, and another one is an academic learning pathway. And so I have discipline data, but I won't read it. I won't share that. But if you would like the discipline data for the district, I can give you that. But I can tell you that we've missed a lot of instructional days due to out-of-school suspensions. And you all know that if you miss one day of instruction, you get behind, because you don't hear what the teacher said, and you miss that. If you miss 10 days, and then you come back to school, you're way behind. By having an alternative school, instead of sending children home, we could send children to the alternative school and continue their education. So are there any questions for me specifically?
Yes, sir.
I was just wondering, alternative and graduate 22 credits, right? Okay, another student's next. How does that impact them going to college? Will they be prepared with credits that they need to go to college?
I want to address that, right now, there's a state push that the state is going to 22 credits total. Right now, I think the legislature is going to 22 credits total, I believe. So that information, I think, is going to change. Ms. Coll, is that 22 credits total for the state?
In our policy, and of course, I don't have it right in front of me, reads as 22. It was never changed to like where most of our kids are graduating with 28 credits. But our policy was never adjusted. Only the adjustments were made where they added U.S. History II instead of just having U.S. History I.
So if this proposal passes, all of our students will be under 22-credit model?
And forgive me, I didn't press this button, but if everybody heard me, I'm sure, right?
As I understand it, this is a proposal that we approve and is forwarded to the State Board of Education for their approval before anything happens. So this is as much an application for an alternative school as it is, it's both proposal. Talk just a little bit about the credit recovery part of it.
Well, I think I would refer that to Ms. Collard.
I can't speak to the model built into the alternative school program, but right now, there are efforts being made at Anson High School and Anson Early College as well. But when a student is credit deficit, where they use a lab-type model, where students can come in and get credit for that course. Now, on a college transcript, it shows as credit recovery if they don't take the full course over. And so we also offer that every summer. The summer programming is same thing. It's like through computer software. It's condensed until to discover the main standards, and standards the children didn't show proficiency in. And again, it doesn't, it's not going to make them eligible to go play sports in college or take that as a college credit. Those situations are good for students that maybe just didn't pass the English or math. Just isolated cases here and there. When you look at alternative programs, typically, aren't they for students who maybe they didn't pass a whole year's worth of courses or half the courses?
Or they may have an extended period of absences, not coming to school. And so they were not able to pass those courses. And so this gives them an option to be able to take those classes and graduate. And so the goal is to make sure they are able to graduate. And so with the credit recovery, that allows them that opportunity, and it's flexible.
What grade spans will you be working with?
So we're looking at nine-12 for credit recovery. Elementary students will only go for referrals for discipline. And that's because a lot of times when an elementary child is suspended, if they're suspended 10, 20 days, that mom and that dad has to find daycare. And a lot of times, it creates a hardship on the family. And so this allows that child to come home to school instead of being suspended and being home. The credit recovery is more for secondary, for high school.
And I want to add, Dr. Truman, currently, we have an access program at the middle school currently for students who can't meet expectation in the classroom. And that's working better than it did the year before last. But this year, currently, we render problems where if a student does not meet expectation in the classroom, when we send them down to access, they have a problem of coming to school and blending in with regular population and causing other problems. By having this program here, getting them off campus, it will be better having a different location, and we can have better control of the students have been off campus than trying to supervise kids who are under the access program on the same campus than having them on a different location.
Yes, sir. And we've had instances where children have been angry, and then they're suspended. And when they finish the suspension, they come back and they're still angry. And so that's not good. That's not a safe environment for everyone concerned. And they're intent on getting revenge, because now, in our technological society that we live in, everybody likes to record everything. And if it's recorded and it's shared or airdropped, and this person is embarrassed because it looks like they lost the fight, or it's just a lot of things that goes on. So it's safer not to have that student back.
And that was going to be my next question. You do have programs and people in place to do interventions with these young people to help them learn what the appropriate behaviors are and help them diffuse whatever crisis they see in their mind that caused them to get there?
Yes, sir. And it needs to be structured, and it needs to be focused. It needs to be intentional. It needs to be that they're not just coming in and coming out. It needs to be that when they come in, we have SCL, social emotional learning. And we have the mental health counselors and things like that in place to teach them how to regulate their behaviors. And we have the personal education plan that they told me was really a game changer, that any child that's admitted to the school has to have a personal education plan. And they asked them, "What is your purpose? What do you want to be? Let's look at the goals we need to set for you." And so these goals are reviewed on a regular basis. It's not like it's just one and done. It's, "We need to look at this, and then if they're not meeting those expectations, let's go back to this plan we devised when you first came in with your mom, with your dad, your parent, grandparent, when we sat down and we decided that this is what needs to happen." And so it's not like, it's not a magic bullet, you know? But it is intentional and structured, and it has a consistent follow-up. And that's what I was really impressed with, with Richmond County. They have that in place. And she was showing me the goal setting and how the students come with their own goals. Because sometimes, my goal might not be what they really want. So you got to meet them where they are. She said they had a student that was coming in late, and they figured out that if when that child walked in late, now one of the things she wanted them to be on time, wanted them to be punctual, she wanted them to complete their work. That's the goal. You know, complete your work, complete what you started. Wanted to know why it was late, and she said they figured out they fussed at him as soon as he got there. Well, the next time he's late, he's just going to stay home, because he's going to say, "Why should I bother coming to school? They just want to fuss at me." And so they figured out, you know, with child development stages, strategies, things like that. You have to meet children where they are. Find out why he's coming late. Find out what's behind that, and then address that. And they said, "Well, what do you want to be?" You'd be surprised. A lot of them may not want to go to college, but they may want to do other things. And so what are the other things that they can do? Because if they're not successful, they're going to be standing on our streets, and they're going to be dropping out of school. And we're going to be afraid to go out. And that's just how, you know, so we have to make sure our children are successful, given their chance.
And one of the questions is going to be, how are we going to fund this? The proposal going through, how are we going to fund it? We're going to fund it very similar than we're funding our programs now. And the question, I anticipate questions that getting 100 students, the state will pay for the principal. Right now, with the program that we're assisting program, we're spending local dollars to fund the current access program. And that now, we'll be able to share resources with the high school on making sure that we have the resources to fund both the six-through-12 program or the six-through-12 concept like we're doing now. So if we don't, we're not, we don't anticipate having 100 students. So the coordinator of the program will be funded locally, and I think Joe is in the audience. So we have a plan that if we don't get 100 students, that we have to have local funds, just like with our current program, very similar funds to current, pay for Mr. Wallace, like we did Mr. Wallace's past year. So, and also share resources to the high school and the middle school. And we met last week, and the principals, administrators, we are already planning how we're going to share resources and meet the needs of students six-through-12.
Ms. Wright, would you like to?
Dr. Ratliff, how many students do you anticipate? Donna, can you hear me now? My light was on. Uh, Dr. Ratliff, how many students are you thinking about in this facility? Where will they be housed? Will it be a permanent, once a child goes to this alternative school, will that be for the whole year? Or will they be introduced back into the regular classes? And I think you mentioned maybe 100 students, Mr. McLean, I'm not sure. How many does it take to have a principal? Will these students be getting face-to-face learning, teaching, or virtual teaching?
Okay. Okay, yeah. We don't anticipate having 100 students initially. That would be nice to have, but because then the principal would be paid for. But we don't anticipate that many. The students will be referred by their principals by recommendation of the principal. However, elementary school students will only be referred through a hearing process, through disciplinary actions that create a hearing. And then they will be referred to the alternative school. It's not the end-all. Once they get there, the goal is to eventually return them back to their school of origin. But however long it takes, we need to look at it for the long haul. Some students may need to go in the rest of the school year. They may get assigned to the school maybe in October, but they may need to be there the rest of the school year. And some students may only need to be there 20 days. It depends upon the individual student. It has to be individualized. Now, I know what you're saying about having the numbers so that we can have the funding for the principal. I think that the numbers will come. Because we have students that come in from other counties. A lot of times, they come in credit deficient. Chris Nelson has come to my office many days and said, "I have three students that are trying to get into Anson High School, and they're all credit deficient. I'm afraid that once they get in, they'll just drop out, and then that's going to count on me." And I says, "Well, if they're living in Anson County, the law says that they can come to school in Anson County." So that's like, for us, that's not good. So if we had somewhere we can direct these students to and assist them to be successful. Because sometimes things happen. Sometimes they have to live with grandma, and they leave where they are and come and live, but the grandma lives in Anson County. So now they're our students. So we have quite a few students that that occurs with. So the academic, we have students that are in like South Providence, which is an alternative school in another county. They come to us. They can go to our alternative school, not the high school. So there are a lot of ways that we can populate the school. It's just, it's just hard to predict, you know, this far out.
Dr. Ratliff, you keep saying elementary. What grade are you talking about? Are you talking about six through eight? Or, you know, what are you calling elementary?
Right now, our sixth graders are in elementary school. And so that's what I was thinking for the sixth graders.
So no less than sixth graders would be in there? You're talking about six-through-12, basically?
Yeah, six-through-12 would be at the alternative school.
Okay, well, now I-
On agenda, I'm sorry, on agenda tonight, if the board decides, if the board votes to keep the sixth grader at the home school, it'll be seven-12. But if the board votes to go back six, it'll be six, so we have flexibility. But that the, depending on how the board votes tonight, if the elementary, if it stays where it is, it'll be seven-12 at the, at the program.
Okay, the packet that you gave us at our February board meeting, it had a budget of $1.4 million. And the one we got in this packet was $300,000. So is that telling me that the teachers are going to be virtual?
No, no. Actually, Ms. Wright, would you like to come up and explain that? But what happened is that we actually projected for the full salary, but now it's prorated, because we have those staff people already on staff, but I'll let her-
Well, when we started the budget, we did it as if we were going to have five individual teachers there, or a full-time nurse, or a full-time social worker. And then we decided that we would need to use, that was not the way to set up the budget to submit to the state. So we went back and did our shared resources, and that cut the budget way back.
So the counselors, the nurses, they will be like shared? And the teachers are going to be shared? We're going to have teachers face-to-face with those students?
Well, the sharing will come through allotment. So they will get an allotment that will come from the middle school and the high school.
But we will have face-to-face teaching?
And the initial budget had salaries at, for people at the top end of their salary scale. So I think that might have been.
I noticed in the proposal that with the principal's permission, they may continue to participate in sports as long as they maintain their attendance and their work shows progress. Does that also apply for their CTE programs, their vocational programs?
That would be a principal decision, yes.
The principal will have the option to allow them to participate in those.
Yes.
And is this going to be at our current access location, or are we somewhere else? And is this going to be at our current access location or are we somewhere else?
Right now, the current access location.
Is that up here on the hill?
Dr. Raff is, uh, working, working at that school. I know the principal's real good. She will turn that school around. And they ultimately, they have they go reach that, you know, main thing we having to go. Most time it's third day, ninth day, you have meetings for students to go. And we have special graduations. So that may be something to that. So, uh, and the pathway, have they, uh, what grade basically do, would they determine their pathway? Do they come in, they determine their pathway when they first come in? Or do they just determine it as a certain time?
I think it would be good for the school counselors to meet with them and, and talk to them about their goals when they first come in.
Any other questions, Dr. Radley? Thank you, Dr. Radley.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Uh, next up, Dr. McLaren, will you come, uh, it's getting late in the evenings. But will you come up briefly and give us a report on, um, on scouting? What you've done in scouting and where you've gone to recruit? And give a, uh, update on your, um, contracts that you have on the agenda?
Superintendent McLean, Chairman Truman, board members, uh, we'll try to be a little bit brief with this tonight. Uh, we had four that we recruited heavily this month. Two of the schools that we recruited were two of the biggest education schools in the state of North Carolina. That's, uh, East Carolina University and Appalachian State. Both are known for turning out some of the highest number of teachers. At each one, there were 271 graduates this spring coming from East Carolina. Appalachian State, when I talked to the dean, said about 275. They said in a normal year, they will place 350 students in student teaching on top of all the other students. East Carolina said this is the first year they've ever graduated under 400. So, uh, numbers are down from both. When we went to recruit, it was kind of interesting. There were 115 different school districts that came from 19 different states to recruit teachers from North Carolina, from our two biggest schools. So not, not only are we in competition with other districts in North Carolina and South Carolina, we're, we're in competition with districts all across the nation. And as we were walking out from, uh, Appalachian State, I asked a couple of them. We had a pretty good walk, uh, to where everybody was parked. So, you know, I was kind of walking a little bit slow, uh, taking my time. But it was interesting in talking to them. I said, what makes you come to North Carolina? How would you come from Alaska to North Carolina? How would you come from Arizona to recruit? And their simple answer was, we pay enough that we can come in here and grab four or five teachers from North Carolina at these two, and these are the only two we go to recruit. So, um, we, we are recruiting against, uh, everybody now. From UNC Pembroke, they've got 36 seniors graduating and UNC Charlotte has 94. So, um, when you look at the numbers of what we're projecting for teacher vacancies, we, we are projecting when you figure the state has a little bit under an eight percent attrition rate, 12% attrition rate for beginning teachers. The state of North Carolina is gonna have to fill 8,700 teacher vacancies this year. Last year at the start of school, by day forty, we were still 3,000 short across the state. So we are projecting that that's gonna be hired this year. And this isn't the bad year. Next year is the year that's gonna be really, uh, tough as far as recruiting teachers. One of the things we've been trying to do is build pipelines from Anson County back to Anson County. Uh, I want to thank both of our high school principals, Ms. Decker and, uh, Mr. Stinson. They've both been great to work with. They are looking at doing a teacher cadet curriculum, which will encourage kids from Anson County to look at education, look at teaching as a career. And we'll be able to get them, uh, college credits to go through that. Also, Ms. Decker found where we can offer an associates of arts and teacher prep. So that our students can graduate from the early college or from Anson High School with an associate's degree and have those credits, they are ready to go. We've also signed some memorandums this month. We finalized everything with South PMOT Teacher Assistant Apprenticeship. We finalized everything with Wingate so that we're gonna be able to send students to Wingate, teacher assistants to Wingate, and through the Gateway Scholarship, be able to get them back to Anson County with pretty much zero debt for them. Which is one of the things we've been working on. We also got the memorandum in place with Pfeiffer. And we've got a new one with St. Andrews where we're gonna be hosting student teachers from St. Andrews next year. We've already got one that's coming that we've, we've agreed to. So we, we are reaching out to every local university, trying to get student teachers coming to Anson County schools, hoping that we can sign them ahead of time. You've got two contracts tonight. One is bringing back the EPI contract, which has been on the table the last two months. And then you've got a new one with Global Teaching Partners. Both contracts went through Schwartz Educational Law before we bring them to the board. And, and we were able to work with both companies on that. Uh, good thing is with Schwartz, they were familiar with both contracts, both companies. They've worked with them in other districts. They knew the things in there that needed to be tweaked to make sure Anson County Schools was protected in those contracts. We also hope to come back soon with one from, uh, Participate Learning. We've been working with Free Bird McKinney since July of this past school year. Now, one of the reasons we're holding on that contract is of January 31st, they had no more J1 visas. They couldn't recruit teachers. So Anson County Schools is actually in the pot for next school year because there's such a need for them. There's such a, uh, across the state, so many districts have that need for teachers. They've already taken up all those J1s for this school year. So we're not able to. Another thing we did this month, and I wanted to bring this to the board just as a FYI. We've done the planning allotments for the 24, 25 school year. Uh, we've sat down with principals. We've done their state allotments for teachers, state allotments for teacher assistants. Now, the next thing we'll do is sit down and look at supplemental funding to figure out how we can help fill the needs of each school through supplemental funding. And we've got three basic district, uh, funds that we can do that through. And that's an ongoing process. But with us going away, it is very important that we plan, that we plan ahead. So we, we're trying to get ahead of the curve this year and what we're doing on that. Any questions or anything I need to clarify?
Yes, and looking at your document, so we're showing a net loss of three elementary teachers for next year.
K-8 teachers. And that's with, uh, reduction in enrollment. That comes straight from every, the way we allotted, uh, teachers. We took the NC DPI allotment policy manual, and we did it straight by the book, the way the policy manual and DPI says to do it. And with our reduced enrollment, our number of kids, our ADM has dropped. That basically comes out to a reduction of three teachers for the district. But we, we've heard from, uh, DPI and the state board today how important this is to staff every classroom in our district. I thought it was some really good information they brought to us. That showed that we're doing some good things in curriculum instruction. We're putting the right programs in school. We're doing the right professional development. We've got a sustainability plan to be able to train people coming in our district. But it's critical that we staff, that every child has a certified competent teacher in front of them every single day. Thank you.
Well, one quick question.
Dr. McLaren?
Yes, ma'am.
A question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I stand to be corrected. But EPI, didn't you make a request to pull that contract?
We, uh. That was me, uh, pulled it because of the, um, the length it was taking to pull it. And I was afraid that there'd be no qualified, no quality teachers to come from the contract. But I was assured that there's still some teachers that we can pull from it. May not be top quality, but it still be some teachers that we can get from it. But may not be top quality, but there still be some certified teachers that we can get out of the contract. So that was me suggesting that. But I suggested that we still can get some, some use out of the contract. I'll put it back in there.
Well, are you recommending that contract?
Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
Are you, you, we got the email that you're pulling it, but you still have it on the, on the agenda. Are you, uh, what's your stance on it?
My stance is that it's been vetted by, um, Schwartz, that the contract is, is vetted by him and that other districts are using the contract. And I, you've heard, it's like I've heard that there's a shortage of teachers. And that's just another, um, just another avenue of us recruiting teachers to put in our classrooms. So I'm putting it back on the board to use your judgment on, um, passing the contract. But, um, the contract is valid and it's been vetted. As, so it's up to the board to whether or not to pass it. But I didn't want to take anything off the table that it can benefit us and our students.
Okay, there's been a lot of questions about these contracts, especially the one that we, the first one we saw today, the last one compared to the first one. And, uh, I wish you and I, Dr. McLaren and I had some discussion while I go about them. We should have talked about it in a closed session. There's a lot of misleading stuff on here. We're not obligated to use these agencies only if we need to. A contract with them does not obligate us to hire teachers through them at all. Our goal is to go to domestic teachers first, if possible. These will only be used in a necessity. And that's what I'm guaranteed.
But what, what I understand though is, once we okay these contracts, then the school system can move forward with using those vacancies. And once they okay them, then we, we're kind of already obligated to it because we've okayed the contract.
If I remember.
So if we, if we okay the contract, and let's say, um, tomorrow you go out and hire 10 people with the EPI contract, let's say. Basically, you can go ahead and do that because we've already okayed the contract. But if we, otherwise you would hire teachers and they would come before the board for, um, employment.
Well.
They still have to be approved.
They'd have to do that anyway. We, we have to approve the teacher, anybody they hire, we have to approve them. I'm, I'm not.
Okay, but if we, but if we go and say, we've ob, we've obligated the money already then. So according to the contracts, if we, if we say, yes, we're gonna take the 10, and then it comes before the board and we go, but hey, wait a minute, I think we can do this, this, or this, or we don't need 10 people. We've already obligated it to the contract.
You're right.
And where is the money coming from?
That's accurate because I remember talking with Dr. Long when he was here. He said, you only pay for the ones you use. And if you don't use one, even if we hire them, we don't use them, they go back to them and they reassign them. We only pay for the ones we use. And so if he hires 10, and then we can find three good ones locally, we'll cash those other three back in.
We are in need for certified teachers. And no contractor is gonna have everything you want. But this is what we need. And as long as we getting exactly what we need, I don't see anything wrong with us having both of these if they can give us certified teachers. I just, I just think we, we, we sometime we're coming against what we need. I mean, we need it. Our children are suffering and perishing for the lack of knowledge. So if we don't get certified teachers in here, we're in trouble. We already in trouble, but we need some help. And I think that, you know, we keep sending them out to find a contract that's gonna have everything we want. No contract, and you know that in living, is gonna have everything. But as long as they have the majority of what you need, we are in need for certified teachers. And we keep sending it away, keep sending them out there to get. We, we just, we just making our kids suffer. I, my, I, my goal is, I am for the life of a child. We, we gotta think about our children. Our children, the clock is ticking. The year is about over. We're not ready to go into another, we gotta prepare our kids to live because you moving our board, whether you know it or not. You moving our ship. So we gotta make room. I want to prepare some child that they have the opportunity that I've had, and that's to live. And we keep pushing away these contractors, uh, finding little, little things that, you know. And it's, it's just, you wasting time. And our babies are suffering. You fool. You got your lunch, you got your bed, and you got your house. But think about this child. Just think, put, put away your feelings. I want to put away our feelings, and think about our children. You're not going home with them. And you're not gonna bring them to your bed. But we need somebody that is willing to give up their home to come in certified to teach our children. And we keep saying, we don't want this and we don't want that. But you say, but you need. And what you're saying you don't want, you're saying you don't, you, you don't want it, but, but you need it. I just think we should just, you know, bring it in. You're not gonna get everything you want. But we're gonna get what we need in the midst of these contracts.
I want to add, excuse me, I didn't mean to cut you off. I want to add to what Ms. Little is saying. And that is, every one of these agencies will get a certain number of J1 visas. And everybody in this state, in the next state, in the next state, in the next state is going after them. And so I feel like we need multiple contracts. Because if we need a math teacher, Global may not have it. The other one may not have it. He's gonna have to go to multiple agencies to find one math teacher. Because everybody's recruiting from them too. So we just need to be mindful of what we're doing when we kick this can down the road. We may be putting ourselves in a position not to have certified teachers next year.
Well, not just certified teachers. We want to make sure we can get the best ones we possibly can. With our principals, you hate to put one company up there and then probably have five or six math teachers left. And our principals are looking at them saying, we're gonna pick from these five or six. But if those five or six don't meet our principal's demands and what our principals need for our schools, then we need to make the pool as big as we can so that they can go out and recruit the very best person that they can.
But we don't need to let this be our first avenue like it was last year. This needs to be our fallback.
Uh, it was not, we, we, it's not our first avenue. We out, still recruiting locally. But there was not, nothing locally out there. We've been, how many local trips have you been on this year, last two months?
At least one a week for the last two months.
How many have you signed?
Zero signed, and we've got a handful of very interested.
And we gotta remember.
But we also don't have any math interested. And we got, we're gonna have three high school vacancies in math.
And we gotta remember where we are located at. Our own children are coming out of colleges and they don't want you. Because you ain't treating, you ain't treating them right. You ain't paying them right, you ain't respecting them, you ain't honoring them. You know, any, any certified teacher that would give up their life to go in these classrooms nowadays with what we dealing with in Anson County, you need to be at, at home praying and thanking God. And I believe if you praise God and begin to thank him, these teachers would even do better. But no, we are cursing everything. Nobody fits what we want but our children. Now, our children, we're satisfied with our children teaching, but your child cannot do the, do the whole school. Your child just can only do a portion. We need teachers with the S on it. Not your teacher, not just your child, but we need teachers. And we, we, we just prolonging our children, the lack of education, what we don't bring in this county. This little small poverty county. And, and you, if, if, I mean, I, I be around, I go places. And Anson County is talked about. Our board is talked about. Y'all don't want no teachers. I would, they going to Charlotte. They going to Salisbury. I, I mean, I, I have certified teachers I know in Anson, in Stanley County, where I'm from. They said, Jude, I wouldn't come there because I've seen how y'all treat them. And guess what? They driving the Concorde, they driving the Salisbury, they driving the Charlotte. And, and because the way we, what we're doing, and our kids are still suffering, and our own children are leaving this county, going to work somewhere else because of your attitude. The whole, I'm talking about the board, it's nine of us.
Well, I think we need to have a termination of this because we're gonna discuss this again in new business. Um, so can I go ahead and move on if you don't mind?
The thing I was saying was, I wish we had, had a good conversation with Dr. McLaren while I go. And I have a better understanding of these three contracts than I did before. I didn't say anything negative about them. I just said I had a better understanding. And our concern, our concern before is the hundreds of thousands of dollars that are, these contracts are costing us.
It only costs us if we use that person, and that money comes from the state.
If we have to, we will. It's an option, but not a priority to use this.
But it's cost neutral to us. The state still pays their salaries.
Yes, sir.
One quick thing.
I don't, I don't understand that. I don't understand that, so explain that again, because what I see in here is, if we recruit from one, it's $19,000 a year. The state's not paying that.
They give us an allocation from the state for a teacher. What is that amount?
Little bit over $77,000.
Yeah, but we don't have to match or pay their social security. Why should we? They'll never draw social security. They'll leave North Carolina, they'll go back to their homes, they'll never have the opportunity to draw social security. Why should they pay it? We don't pay their health insurance because the company pays their health insurance. And so those monies that we recover by not paying those things, it's where that $19,000 comes from.
Okay.
It's cost neutral to us.
Question to you and anybody in here. The state's spending that much money, extra money for, for foreign teachers, why don't they give it to teachers here?
Because your teachers here, the teachers don't want to come here. As soon as the state realizes they're doing this, they're going to take the money back.
But the teachers don't want, the teachers that are here, they don't want you because you don't want them. That's why, that's why they're not giving it to them. They don't want you.
Well, I would like to close out this discussion, because we're going to bring these back up again in old business and new business. However, Dr. McLaurin, if you can get us a one pager that says, these are initiatives I've taken this year to try to find teachers in, in our county and in our state, we need it because we're asked from time to time again, what are you doing? What are you doing to find teachers? And this gives us some documentation, something that we can share with our public as to what Anson County Schools is doing. Needs to be a one pager. Thank you. That completes my report, Dr. Truman. Okay, at this time we're at action items, that's the number 12 on your agenda. But let me ask this question first, I'm sorry. Do any of the board members have any open session questions that they would like to ask superintendent? An open session question. No, we haven't gone to action items yet. I mean, are there any questions for the superintendent that are appropriate for open Hearing none, now we'll go to action items number 12. And the only one we have is because we've moved A02 and A03 to new business, we have consent items, a personnel report. And so at this time, I need a motion to approve the consent items as presented. I have a motion to approve, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, and a discussion over the personnel report, which is under consent items. All in favor of approving the consent items, please indicate by saying aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries and the consent items are approved. Now we go to old business, which is B01 Educational Partners International Agreement. And this is one of the two, I think, that was bundled into our previous discussion. Do I have a motion to approve Educational Partners International Agreement? Hearing none, it dies for a lack of a motion and a second. And so we go to new business. Sixth grade placement for 2024-25. The first thing I think we need is a discussion. C01 was already on the agenda.
Don't we need to do two and three?
We'll do two and three after C01. Uh huh. So at this time, the floor is open for discussion for the placement of sixth graders 24-25. Do I have a motion for the placement of the sixth graders for 24-25?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second that the sixth graders remain at the elementary schools for 24-25. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a vote. All in favor of placing the sixth graders in the elementary school for 24-25, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries and the sixth graders will remain at the elementary schools for 24-25. Now we go to C02, which is Global Teaching Partners Agreement. Do I have a motion to approve the Global Teaching Partners Agreement as presented? Have a motion, do I have a second? We have a motion and a second, so now we can have discussion. And, so now we have a motion and a second to approve Global Teaching Partners Agreement. I am adamantly in favor of it, because I want us to have certified teachers next year, and I realize it's going to be a very much a shortfall of them, and it's going to be very difficult to find them. And we need as many avenues to bring in certified teachers to Anson County as we can possibly get. I would prefer we recruit locally if local candidates are available, and I prefer that we will recruit regionally and within our state, and that they get first priority if they're qualified and certified teachers. But if we can't find them, as much as I appreciate the work of our long-term subs, they cannot provide the same educational opportunities for our children as a certified teacher.
I, I have a question on this. So the current contract we're under, because it looks very similar, but it's not the same, correct?
No, ma'am. Current contract's an H1B contract, this is a J-1 contract.
And the difference between the two is?
One is for more of a long term, it's the work visa. The other one's a cultural visa. On the one for a cultural visa, it's paid differently. One on H1B visas, we have to pay, and we don't have ester funds anymore. The J-1 visa comes from a drawdown from the state, so that $19,000 fee that you see, or the $16,000 fee, is paid out of our drawdown from the state, so it doesn't cost Anson County Schools any money. Any, any local funds don't have to go in to pay for that. Any supplemental funds don't have to go in. That comes straight from the drawdown on what a teacher allotment is.
But the H1, we pay for.
H1, we, we pay for that, and after this month, that'll be our only option, because teachers will be gone on J-1s. H1 would be our only option. Once you get into the summer, the J-1 visas are gone, they're allocated, EPI, the minute we didn't pass it last month, we're sending our allotments to Richmond County, Stanley County, and all the places around us because there's such a need for it.
But it only cost us $5,000 per each for the ones we've got now, for this next year.
Yes, ma'am, but that money comes from our funds.
The only thing I would say, Dr. Truman, based on what you said and, and a board's agreement of, this isn't our primary way of headhunting for teachers. This is an additional source of, of opportunities.
This is an emergency plan.
Now, and did I hear you, Dr. McLaurin, say there's yet another plan you want to bring to us?
Yes, ma'am. Participate Learning was the other company we'd like to bring, and these are the top three J-1 companies in North Carolina. All three also have no objection status in the state of South Carolina. So the Department of Education approves those contracts, so that districts know they're vetted, and they can go straight with those contracts. Last, last summer with the H1B, that was our emergency plan, and that was the option we had. Now, what we're in now is phase two, where we're trying to build recruitment from Anson County back to Anson County. The problem with that is it takes two to four years even once we get those things in place. So we've got to be able to fill in those gaps until we can get our own people back.
Are the teachers with the J-1 visa, will they be certified North Carolina teachers?
Yes, ma'am. They come in on an international faculty license, they will process that license before they ever come.
Participate Learning's what most people have been using over the years, when they'd have one or two international teachers, right?
Participates the biggest company, J-1 in North Carolina. Used to be VIF years ago, and they changed names, and they actually went more from a company that was strictly out recruiting teachers, the one that did a lot of programming that went with it. They do dual immersion programs and other programs where the teacher's actually woven into the type of programming that's done. Takes a, probably a year's worth of planning to put some of those things in place and to do it the right way.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving C02 Global Teaching Partners Agreement, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand. Let me get a good vote. All right, have you got that in? All opposed, same sign. All right, the motion carries and the Global Teaching Partners Agreement is approved. All right, now we go to C03, which is Administration recommends approval of the alternate, alternative school proposal as presented. Do I have a motion? I have a motion, do I have a second? We have a motion and a second, and now we have discussion.
Okay, do these students, will they be assigned the first day of school, or will there be some trial period to see where they belong?
Some students may go the first day of school.
Okay, and they will be housed where?
Right beside Wake Forest Elementary School.
Up here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And by Ms. Gibson's question and mine too, they will have face-to-face learning, this will not all be virtual?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? I think it's a great idea, y'all do put a lot of work into that proposal, and I really think it'll be beneficial to our school system and beneficial to the young people who are going to participate in it.
Okay, but you have to have state approval to do it?
Yes, sir, but we need board approval first.
Board approval first.
This is the application that goes to the state board.
Understand that, but how much of this stuff we're doing, in 60 days, we're going to have new administration? How much of this stuff should we hold off until new administration?
The, it's going to the state board, and the state board is the one giving us recommendations on the new administration. So they will see it before they give that person to us. At this time, I'd like to entertain a vote on C03 Alternative School Proposal. Administration recommends the approval. All in favor of approving the proposal, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries and the proposal is endorsed. That's all the business that I have. We have the calendar items before us. Are there any questions for clarification or requests for additional information?
Dr. Truman, I, I think that on the calendar item, that budget workshop has been moved to the 29th.
We have to readdress that. We're not able to do the budget workshop on the 11th, and so we have a proposal to do it. Can I take that as a motion, Ms. Davis? All right, we're going to put that as a motion to do it on, what is that day, 29? At 10 o'clock on the 29th.
It's 2:00, I thought it's 2:00 because it's only a two-hour meeting.
Oh, okay, 2:00 on the 29th. That is the budget meeting, the one that we initially thought we could do on the 11th, we can't do it on the 11th. So we're moving it to, at 2:00 on the 29th. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, that motion carries and the budget meeting will be moved to the 29th at 2:00. Any further questions on the calendar? All right, Mr. Turner, what was it? I'm sorry, Mr. Turner, I can't hear you.
Mr. McLean, Mr. McLean handles that.
At this time, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'm with adjourn.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.